Let's call this meeting in order. Stand for the fudge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Thank you for your patience here while we're working through our technical difficulties. This is the first meeting of 2018 for the Porter County Board of Commissioners. I look forward to another exciting year with my board members and our staff. I want to thank everybody last year for a great year in 2017, and we look forward to enterprising 18 as well. So with that, we will move right into the reorganization. I'll open the floor to the board.
Motion to approve Jeff Good, President of the Porter County Commissioners.
We have a motion as second for Jeff Good as President. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign. Vice President, open the floor.
Motion to approve Laura Blaney as Vice President of the Porter County Board of Commissioners.
Second, we have a motion as second for Vice President Laura Blaney. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to appoint Jim Biggs Secretary.
Second, we have a motion as second for Secretary Jim Biggs of the Porter County Board of Commissioners. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. I'll make the motion for our county attorney. Oh, wait, that's different. That's a contract, isn't it?
It is.
Okay. So this is for the contract for our Board Attorney, County Attorney Scott McClure. I'll open the floor.
I gotta think about this one.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion as second for the contract for 2018 for County Attorney Scott McClure. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. We'll now move into the consent agenda. This is approval of minutes December 16th, 2017, approval of payroll December 15th, December 29th of 2017, and January 6th of 2018, approval of claims December 14th, December 21st, 2017, and treasurer's monthly report October 31st and November 30th of 2017. We also have the comp time report on file in our office, and we also, you know, let's should we just break? Let's break it there. Let's approve the consent there, and then we'll move into the board appointments because it gets a little.
Motion to approve.
Second, we have a motion as second for the consent agenda up into Commissioners' appointments. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. Commissioner appointments. We have Mercey. I'll nominate Jim Biggs.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Jim Biggs' Mercey appointment. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign. Next is Nikte. I'll appoint Jim Biggs. Nikte? Nikte?
Second.
We have a motion as second for Jim Biggs to serve as a Commissioner's appointment for Nikte. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. Plan Commission, I'll nominate Laura Blaney.
Second.
We have a motion as second for Laura Blaney to sit on the Plan Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. Stormwater Advisory Board.
Move to approve Jeff Good.
Second.
We have a motion as second for Stormwater Advisory Board appointment of Jeff Good. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. Community Corrections Board, I'll nominate Jim Biggs.
Second.
We have a motion as second for Community Corrections Board. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. Juvenile Justice Advisory Board, I'll make the motion to nominate Jim Biggs.
Second.
We have a motion as second for Jim Biggs on the JJA B Board.
I'll have it a life.
Yeah. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign. How does that change? I mean, he teed me up. EMA, this is something we're going to be doing new this year because we now have a Public Safety Director for Porter County. So I will nominate to sit on the Emergency Management Advisory Board, Mike Brechner.
So moved.
And a second, we have a motion as second to appoint Mike Brechner on our EMA Emergency Management Advisory Board. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. Child Protection Team, I'll nominate Laura Blaney. She currently sits on that board now.
Second.
A motion as second to approve Laura Blaney for the Child Protection Team. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. 911 Advisory Board, again, I will make the motion to appoint Mike Brechner on Public Safety Director for the 911 Advisory Board.
Second.
We have a motion as second for Mike Brechner, 911 Advisory Board. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Center for Workforce Innovations, I believe that is Laura Blaney. We have a motion for Laura Blaney.
Second.
We have second. Motion as second for Laura Blaney for Center for Workforce Innovations. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. We are done with the Commissioners stuff. We made record time of that. Next on the agenda is Memorial Opera House. Is he here? He is here, Scott McDonald. These are contracts that we have to approve. I'm gonna try to go through them here, Scott. I think I can actually pronounce these names. Zachary Gibson for Venue Rental Agreement, this is for a non-for-profit. We had Julie Draves of Artistic Service Agreement, and William Woods for an Artistic Service Agreement, all for the Memorial Opera House. I'll open the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion as second to approve the consent agenda for contracts for the Memorial Opera House. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion. Post saying sign. Motion carries. Caught myself. Oof. New business. We're gonna move into announcements. First of all, we were very excited here as the Board of Commissioners. Last December, we had, I think some of you are aware that we've had a vacant opening for the HR Director for the Porter County Government Center, and I'm very pleased to announce that we have hired a new HR Director for the county. She's actually been working for us now for about five weeks, and her name is Heather Scher. Scher? 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 Come on up, Heather. Just give us a little bit about yourself, and again, welcome. Yeah, just use that microphone right there. Thank you. Give us a little bit about your background, where are you from?
Sure.
Just let the folks know what you're all about.
Sure. It's great to be here. I moved back here from Chicago two years ago. I grew up in Porter County in Hebron, Indiana. Went to high school there, and went to DePaul University in Chicago. Was up in there for about 15 years, and doing HR for the past 10. Worked for an engineering company that started off at about 45 employees and grew up to 420, so had a lot of experience with organizational development, employee relations, helped out quite a bit with payroll, helped out a lot with employee benefits and onboarding. So just really happy to be here. There seems like there's some great challenges, some amazing people that work in Porter County, and just really happy to be a part of it.
Thank you, Heather, and welcome very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking forward to a great 2018, working with Heather and her department to advance the HR cause here in Porter County. So thank you. Next is the President's 2018 Plan Overview. Not much really there. What I wanted to do was use, you're gonna be seeing this on our agendas going forward. It's gonna be an opportunity for us to announce certain things that this board is working on, and trying to also use this opportunity to announce and update people as things that we're working on. This year, 2018, already, I'd just like to let everybody know, as you all know, getting here today, you had to brave through the snow and the ice and the terrible weather that we've really had up here the last four weeks. We've been getting updates from the Highway Department, and we've already gone through quite a bit of salt this year, so we're monitoring that closely, making sure that we constantly have enough salt. But the other thing that I think needs to be entered into public record is that we're also seeing this year a significant amount of freeze damage to our roads than what we've seen in the past. So we're very concerned about that going forward, because as you know, we have 840 miles of roads in Porter County, and when they start cracking and they start popping because of the freezing action that we have up here, obviously, that is a cost concern for us. So we're monitoring it, but we also wanted to let the public know that this storm is a little bit tougher than some of the other storms. I think you're all seeing it on the roads, a lot more potholes, a lot more cracking. So we're gonna keep our fingers crossed. That last fall really killed us. But I think it's something that the public needs to be aware of. This is a tremendous investment in our county, in these roads, and I want to make sure that we're bringing everybody along as we go as to what the condition of our roads are. It's been a big focus for us up here. So keep your fingers crossed. Hopefully, Mother Nature will be a little bit nicer to us in the next 60 days, we're hoping. But we're watching it closely, and there is concern there. We also want to make sure that we let the council members know that as well, too, because hopefully, nothing will come out of it, but we're watching it, and we're monitoring it, and we wanted to let people go, to let people know. The other announcement that I have is pretty much, it's just one big announcement, and that is that this year, as far as the Board of Commissioners are concerned, you know, there's been a lot of posturing by a lot of different departments of different capital improvement projects and different needs that other departments and people think they need. We're gonna come out in the first meeting of the year and let everybody know that as far as the Board of Commissioners are concerned this year, our plate is full. Okay? We approved a $30 million capital improvement plan last year, along with a $20 million storm drainage project last year. So we have, this board is basically responsible for spending $50 million of Porter County taxpayers' money. And in order to implement this, and coming from a construction background that I have, you need to be focused, you need to pay attention, and you need to be on these projects. And that's where the significant amount of our time will be spent this year. Also, I'd like to let everybody know that we all serve at the constituents of Porter County citizens, but we're part-time. We're one of the few, you know, the council's part-time, too, but we're part-time. So for us to take on a large project like this, that we're taking on, and doing all the things and implementing it the correct way, it's gonna take a lot of time, a lot of meetings, a lot of thought, and we want to stay laser-focused on this capital spend and do it right. So we're not gonna allow different things and different agendas and different people wanting different things to interrupt us with executing this very important task that we have in front of us. So in a certain way, I don't want to say we're not open for business, because we're always open for business, but I also want it very clear, in an election year, that we're not basically going to be entertaining a lot of different needs, a lot of different wants. We're focused on taking care of the county's needs, not wants right now, and that continues on as we move forward. So I can't say that enough. I know we're going to be challenged to be look at things, even though we've made this announcement, but I also felt it's very important to go on record at the beginning of the year to let everybody know what this board is going to be doing this year, and it's a big, big task. It's a big task if you were full-time up here. It's a big task. So we bit off a lot last year, and this year, we're gonna chew on it. So I just want to let everybody know what we're up to and what we're going to be focused on, so it's no surprise to anybody. So just want to be straightforward and let everybody understand where we're coming from. Any of the other board members want to chime in?
Totally agree, Mr. Chairman. And getting back to the needs and the wants of county government, the needs of county government, as it's structured and as the law suggests, your needs are addressed at the budget hearings. Your needs are not brought up or should not be brought up in the middle of a budget season. And that's what we're trying to direct county government back into that lane. We, as Jeff pointed out, we have taken on a huge amount of responsibility, probably more responsibility than this board has seen in a very, very long time. And that, and we need to be, you know, our concentration needs to be on those jobs. So that's what we're going to do, and we just, we don't want to complete these jobs. We want to complete them well. And we can't do that if we're always being jerked back, you know, from those responsibilities and asked to redirect our attention away from it. So I'm in total agreement.
Same, I'm in agreement, and I'm looking forward to it. It's gonna be an exciting year.
I would also like to point out at our January 30th meeting, which is two weeks from now, we will start bringing contracts forward for architects to start the process of designing these buildings and these things that we're going to be doing. There's been a lot of legwork in the last 90 days of meeting with folks and talking to folks and coming up with budgeted amounts and dollar amounts, and so the actual progression and the starting of this is going, it's been working, but the official start, you'll start seeing it at our January 30th meetings, where you'll be seeing architectural contracts and other things coming forward. So it's coming like a freight train, but we got a lot of catch-up to do, and we want to make sure that we still get in this building season this year, that we can still get some shovels in the ground this year yet. And so that's why we have to stay focused, and we have to push, and we have to keep on this. So lot to do in a very relatively short period of time. So thank you again for your understanding. We wanted to put it out there, but we'll move on now into the appointments to our boards. So with that, we're gonna first of all go to the Alcohol Beverage Commission. We have one opening as the Board of Commissioners. We have one application in, which was Jason Gilliana. Jason is certainly, Jason is serving on the Alcohol Beverage Board currently right now. I'll open the floor.
Motion to reappoint.
Second.
We have a motion as second to reappoint Jason Gilliana to the Alcohol Beverage Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign. We have the Board of Health. We have two openings there, and from what I understand, both openings have the people that Elizabeth Forbes and Donna Werner, both have been asked to be reappointed, and so I'll.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
And thank, we have a motion as second for Elizabeth Forbes, Donna Werner for reappointments to the Board of Health. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. BGA, we have one opening. Luther Williams, he wishes to be reappointed.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion as second to appoint Luther Williams to the BGA. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. Kankakee River Basin, we have one opening. That is a board that we work collaboratively with, with the Kankakee River Valley Basin. Last year, we changed our appointment, and we decided to put our county engineer on that board, and so we're wishing to reappoint Mike Novotny, the county engineer, to that board again. I'll open the floor. We have a motion.
Second.
And a second to approve Mike Novotny to the Kankakee River Basin Board. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. Porter County Convention and Visitors Bureau, we have two openings. Both openings are wishing to be reapplied. That's Jesse Harper and Richard Riley. Open the floor.
Motion to approve both.
Second.
We have a motion as second for Jesse Harper and Richard Riley for reappointments to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. Parks and Recreation Board, we had two openings, and we had four applicant, well, we had three applicants, I'm sorry. The current applicant did not wish to be reappointed, so we have three appointment, three people vying for two appointments. Is that correct?
I guess that might be one.
I think we just have one.
We have one.
Yep. We'll just point to one and, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I had motion to appoint Chris Richardson to the Porter County Parks and Recreation Board.
I'll second.
We have a motion as second for Chris Richardson of the Parks and Recreation Board. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. Plan Commission, we have one opening.
Two.
We have two openings.
That's probably why.
That reversed, yep. We have two openings. Luther Williams, again, wishes to be reappointed, and Ken Williams wishes to be reappointed, and they are not related.
I'll make a motion to reappoint them both.
Second.
We have a motion as second to approve Luther Williams and Ken Williams. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. Pita Boa, we have Nancy Colasa and Nick Summer. Their appointments are up. They're both wishing to be reappointed. This board does a lot of heavy lifting, and I think it's good to see that those two folks want to stay in place.
Motion to approve both.
Second.
We have a motion as second for Nancy Colasa and Nick Summer for the Pita Boa appointments. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. Redevelopment Commission, we have two openings for the Board of Commissioners. Jason Gilliana and Steve Solarsky both sit on the board and have asked, have put in applications to be reappointed.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion as second for Jason Gilliana and Steve Solarsky to be reappointed to the Redevelopment Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. Stormwater, we have two openings. We had three, or two, two openings and three people that have wished to be appointed, and I'll open the floor for those appointments.
I'll make a motion for James Hunter and Paul Nelson.
So moved.
We have a motion for James Hunter and Paul Nelson. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. I would also like to point out that one of the person that will be rotating off this Stormwater Board is a gentleman by the name of.
Harvey?
Russ Palmeroy, and I know that like the back of my hand. I don't know where that came from. Russ is, just so you know, I think it's important, we'll be honoring him at our January 30th meeting, but Russ Palmeroy is a South County farmer, has lived down on the complicated ditch network down there in the South County for years. He has been an ambassador. He's been a person that has done a lot of heavy lifting in the world of Stormwater in South County. He's a farmer, and he's done a yeoman's job and has done a lot of work over the years, and we want to celebrate in his work and his accomplishments, working for the Drainage Board and not the Stormwater. So I just wanted to take that opportunity to let everybody know that, and how thankful we are for Russ's service. Next on the list is West Porter Township Fire Department. We have two openings, again, same two folks wishes to be reappointed, Anton Waitkus and Chuck Murray.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion as second for Anton Waitkus and Chuck Murray for the West Porter Fire Department opening. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. Last one, Wildlife Board.
Wild Board.
We have seven openings, and we have seven people wanting to be on the board. So what we will do is, it's Melissa Culbertson, she's a reappoint, Danielle Walker, a reappoint, Denise Sunkel, a reappointment, Bob Gregg, reappointed, Mary Ann Gregg, reappointed, Stephanie Cudletz, and Rose Clemmons are new members that have put in for this board. So those are our seven folks for our seven openings.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion as second to fill all seven openings to the Wildlife Board. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. Housekeeping done.
And I'd just like to say, appreciate all these people so much. We have so many reappointments, and they're all doing a great job, a lot of work. Much appreciated.
I agree.
So now we're gonna move into a couple other things here. The next one on the agenda is the County Auto Policy for Driving County Vehicles, and I'm gonna defer to our attorney, Scott McClure, to give us an overview of what it all means.
So as the board is aware, we've changed our auto carrier for our auto policy for car insurance. One of the things that they requested is that we put together, and this is their policy that has been modified slightly for our needs, but this is the driver safety policy, basically as part of, is dovetailing into what our HR Director's working on as far as some of the onboarding or new hire packets, people that come online that are working here. Basically, in a nutshell, this is the policy for driving a county vehicle. Once a year, all employees that either have a take-home vehicle or may be at any point in time operating a motor vehicle that's one of the counties will have to sign the driver safety policy, which would allow the insurance company to pull their DMV records to make sure they're a driver that would be acceptable to be driving a county vehicle, and then that would repeat once a year. New employees would, that would have access to the operation of a motor vehicle would also have to do the same. And it goes through, it just does the policy guidelines as far as wearing seatbelts, the defensive driving, what to do in case of an accident, what your driving record would look like to make you not a suitable driver for a county vehicle and things like that. So this is going to be part of the new HR onboarding. This is going to be part of our policy as far as dealing with our car insurance. It's been looked over by our new servicing agent, GIS, and the original draft form of this came from GIS, which is what came from Travelers Insurance originally. So be happy to answer any questions, but this would be a policy the Commissioners would need to adopt, and then we can start the implementation process.
Any questions? Open the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion as second for adopting a new County Auto Policy for Driving County Vehicles. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. Next on the docket is our second reading, taking up where we left off last December for our Responsible Bidding Ordinance. I think everybody that was here at the last meeting, or if you weren't here at the last meeting, the county, we went through the first reading and the public hearing for the Responsible Bidding Ordinance for Porter County. This is the final step to complete that, and with that, I'll open the floor for any comments or whatever from our board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion as second to approve the Responsible Bidding Ordinance on second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. Done. Next, Approval of Workforce Health to Provide Blood Testing for Porter County Employees. Scott, is that for, that is for the?
The normal blood testing, the blood testing that occurs, and then the employees get their health report. It's part of our wellness program. I believe those emails have already started to go out to get those scheduled, so.
Yep.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion as second for Approval of Workforce Health to Provide Blood Testing for Porter County Employees. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. I would also like to point out that with regards to the health insurance program of the county, we are currently out in the market right now bidding for that health insurance. So the approval, I think, comes up first April. Is it April or May? Back to that again. April is April. It's April 1 is when the county insurance policy comes up. So we're out in the market, we're out talking to folks, and we're hoping that we get some good news coming back here real soon. So that's in the works. Next on the agenda is the Approval of Garrett Construction Payment Application Number Three for the Admin Building Plaza renovation in the amount of $117,262.58. As you will all see, we're sort of at a standstill out here. Mother Nature has sort of come knocking real hard again. So we're talking and we'll be, hopefully we get a little weather relief here to where we can start having some forward-looking ideas as to when this is going to end and when we're going to be done with it. But I could pretty much say we have a good chunk of it already completed. So we're very excited to unveil that this spring, and I think everybody will see what we think is already starting to show as a very significant change up front. Do we have any questions? Or I'll open the floor up for the approval of this payment application number three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion of second for payment application number three to Garrett Construction for the admin building plaza renovation in the amount of $117,262.58. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposing sign, motion carries. Next on the agenda is Kate Sanders Grant Writing Services Contract. For those of you that don't know, Kate Sanders is our grant writing contracting person who we use throughout the year. A lot of different departments use her, so this is a master agreement for all different departments within county government. I'll open the floor for her agreement.
I'm happy to make the motion. We definitely bring in a lot more dollars than we put out in this deal.
Second.
Yep, so we have a motion of second for Kate Sanders Grant Writing Services Contract for 2018. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposing sign, motion carries. Next, we have the DLZ General Services Agreement. Open up the floor for that. Any comments, questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion of second for DLZ General Services Agreement for 2018. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing sign, motion carries. Next on the docket is the American Structure Point General Services Agreement for 2018. Open the floor for that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion of second for the American Structure Point General Services Agreement for 2018. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposing sign, motion carries. Next on the docket is American Structure Point, again, this is for the bridge application services. American Structure Point will be working with the county this year on a lot of our bridges that we have been moving towards to get corrected and upgraded. And American Structure Point does a lot of work with the state on bridges and other things, and I think that they're a good match. And I know our highway department has vetted them, vetted this whole process very closely. So I'll open up the floor for that as well, too.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion of second for American Structure Point Bridge Application Services Agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposing sign, motion carries. Wow. Okay, Memorial Opera House, let's see, Scott McDonald. Come on forward. Scott has a request for an additional appropriation, oh, you're the one we got to do it.
I'm the troublemaker.
Yeah. They're all going to like this.
Because of Kate and all the grants that we received this year, so...
Oh, no, these are additional. Okay, I'm thinking of something. I always thought these were all public hearing.
No.
Oh, phew. Okay. We depend here for $2.
I'll try and keep us here until July.
So we have, I'm sorry. We have a request for additional appropriation fund 8300 in the amount of $9,867.35 to account 3410 office equipment over $100. The additional is needed to be able to spend out the fund. Why don't you give us an update on that?
Sure. This is actually the Indiana Arts Commission Arts Operations Support Grant. We were slated to receive $7,000, and when we received the grant in November, it was actually closer to $10,000. So that's going to be for box office improvements, new scanners, new equipment in the box office. We're going to be working with IT as far as computers, phones, things like that, just to make our patron experience a little bit better all around on my staff and of course on our patrons.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion of second for additional appropriation fund 8300 in the amount of $9,867.35 to account 3410 office equipment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposing sign, motion carries. We have another request for additional appropriation fund 8300 in the amount of $230 to account 3950 contractual services. Scott, what's that for?
Sure, this is for stipends for our Limelight's program. It's just funds that we use to pay accompanists for the children's classes, all of that.
Okay. Open the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion of second for disappropriation of $240 to fund 8300 to account 3950 contractual services. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposing sign, motion carries. We have a request for additional appropriation fund 9304 in the amount of $6,684.83 to account 3950 contractual services.
Porter County Community Foundation, this is money that we use to stipend our coordinators for the Limelight's that are contractual with us, and we use this to pay their salaries.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion of second to approve, let me see, additional appropriation fund 9304 in the amount of $6,684.83 to 3950 contractual services. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposing sign, motion carries.
Real quick, the Limelight's program is really doing well.
Huge, yes. Last year we had, in 2016, we had 14 students that had registered for that program. Last year, 2017, we had 176 registrants.
Oh, wow.
So the program has really, really exploded, and the two women that are coordinating it, Bobby Sukhavachkov and Jen Lundeen, have just done a fantastic job making this a really, really enriching program. We're very, very pleased to have them on board.
Good, 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 good. Another request for additional appropriation fund 9300 in the amount of $1,898.05 to account 4540 office equipment.
This is remaining funds from the Anderson Grant from last year. We just have some equipment that we're waiting on to come in stock, and then we'll order it and exhaust that fund.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion of second for additional appropriation of $1,898.05. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposing sign, motion carries. We have another request for additional appropriation fund 9301 in the amount of $2,000 to account 3991 other services. Scott?
This is also, this is United Way Power of Youth Grant, and this is utilized for the Limelight's. This is used for things like t-shirts for the kids, books, all of that sort of thing. It really has given us a very nice, healthy operating budget for the Limelight's without pulling from other areas, so...
Okay, open the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion of second for additional appropriation of $2,000 from fund 9301 to account 3991. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposing sign, motion carries. And then our last one is a request for disappropriation of fund 9302 in the amount of $553.
This is from Arts Midwest, and this is to bring in artists from the surrounding Midwest states of either Illinois, Wisconsin, Ohio. We intend to utilize these funds as well for Rock the House Five, to pay off an artist or anything like that, just to chip away at the stipend that it costs to bring in.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion of second for appropriation of fund 9302 in the amount of $553. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposing sign, motion carries. Park Department, Attorney Dave Hommeck, thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
See you soon.
All right.
Morning. Hi, David.
Morning, commissioners.
How you doing?
Getting better every day here. I don't recommend you break your ankle when you're 70 or 80.
Oh, you're showing...
I'm in a shoe now.
Oh, you're in a shoe?
I'm out of a cast, I'm out of a boot.
Did not look at...
I'm not looking for your sympathy, but it's not fun. Good morning.
Morning.
As we have been in the past, we are here as the result of Walter having secured, along with the theme of what you just did, a grant. And under Indiana law and working with our auditor and the State Board of Accounts, we need to have the commissioners set up a separate fund into which this grant money can be deposited. This is a grant that Walter was able to secure on behalf of the Park Department from the Land and Water Conservation Fund. This is federal dollars administered by IDNR. It is in the amount of $200,000, and we're going to build some restrooms at Sunset Hill Farm Park. Certainly answer any questions you may have about the grant, but you are responsible for creating the funds into which these monies are deposited, and the ordinance before you is to effectuate that end.
My question was the dollar amount, and you already gave me that, so, thank you. Motion to approve. Well, we have a public hearing here. So what, I think everybody understands what we have to do for public hearing. I think most of you have probably been here before. What we're going to do right now is we're going to pause the commissioners' meeting, and we're going to open up a public hearing. You are now in a public hearing. So what we're going to do in a public hearing is we're going to give three opportunities for people to come up and speak for this ordinance, and we're also going to give three opportunities for people to come up and speak against this ordinance. So with that, I'm going to call out first, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this ordinance? First call. Second call, anybody wishing to come forward and speak against this ordinance?
Agreed.
Third and final call, anybody wishing to speak, come forward and speak against this ordinance?
Agreed.
Third and final call, anybody wishing to speak, come forward and speak against this ordinance? With that, we will now turn to anybody wishing to, first call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak on behalf of this ordinance? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak on behalf in favor of this ordinance? Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak for this ordinance? And with that, we'll close the public hearing. I'll now open up the floor to the board, if you have any discussion, any comments?
Congratulations, that's a lot of money. Good improvement. I'll make a motion to approve.
Bathrooms are needed, sorry. We have a motion of second on first reading to approve an ordinance establishing a fund for deposit of proceeds from a land and water conservation fund grant to the Porter County Parks Department. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposing sign, motion carries. We'll see you back on the 30th.
Just on the 30th.
Second reading. Thank you. Heel up. Next on the agenda, we have Allison Cox. Oh, I don't think so. I don't think Allison's here. Hi.
Hi.
And who are you?
I'm Becky Love.
Becky, okay. I've seen the name, I've just... And this, go ahead, I think this is for that Newton County contract that she referred to the last time she was here? Any questions or comments from the board?
So what kind of per diem rate did we...
It's $140 a day, 100 bed days a year for Newton County.
Pretty good price.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion of second. Did you say 140 bed days?
100 bed days, $140 a day.
100. Okay, I got the first part, I did 100 bed days. I'm sorry, I'm writing stone. We have a motion and a second for the approval of the 2018 Newton County contract. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposing sign, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Michelle Clancy. We have, you don't really need to come forward, I guess. I just saw it with second reading, I thought I was going to have to go through all that again. Last meeting, our treasurer, Michelle Clancy, was before us on first reading of an ordinance establishing a processing fee for mobile home transfers and moving permits. So this is the second reading. I'll open the floor to the board, if they have any comments, questions, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve the second reading of an ordinance establishing a processing fees for mobile home transfers and moving permits. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposing sign, motion carries. Thank you, Michelle. Matt Steffley, Facilities, we have a Waste Management of Indiana, this is a dumpster contract for EMA approved by Waste Revelations. I think what had happened in the past, past EMA really didn't have a garbage pickup out there, is that what's...
The old animal shelter and EMA were sharing it, and I didn't realize that. So I got rid of the old shelter and the old dumpster went, and here they're out. So they need a small dumpster.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion of second for a Waste Management of Indiana contract for the EMA site. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposing sign, motion carries. Thank you, Matt. Purdue Extension, Aneta Jones, Director. Hi, Aneta. This is Amendment Number Three, Attachment A, and this is the Extension Contractual Service Agreement between Purdue University and Porter County Government.
Yes.
And I think we do this every year, right?
Yes. This just updates the amount that the county pays for that contract that's on file.
Okay, and what is that amount this year?
So this year it's $142,065, and that's already passed through the budget, okay, through the budget.
Okay, good. Just curious.
Yep, no problem.
Any questions of Aneta?
No.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve Amendment Number Three on the, between Purdue University and Porter County Government for Extension Contractual Services. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposing sign, motion carries. Thank you. Have another good year.
Aneta, when do you all have your sales on your fruit trees?
The tree sale is always the first Saturday of April.
Okay.
And we don't yet have our order blank finalized, but I'll get one to you whenever.
Yeah, send them down to us.
Okay, all right, that sounds good.
Thank you.
I think Laura and I spent like $2 million on it last year.
For fruit trees?
Well, you order a lot, I'll order.
But mine died in my office.
Ooh, ooh, they thought the tree was coming. No. Recorder John Miller, come on up, John. How you doing today?
Very good, sir. How you doing?
Good?
Hi, John.
Oh, he's got another public hearing. John, this is an ordinance establishing the manner and form in which the recorder may provide bulk copies, form copies to a bulk user. This is a first reading, John. Why don't you give us a little synopsis of what that's all about?
Sure. We currently are selling bulk copies of images, what they are, we're talking about digital copies, not hard copies. We've been doing that, but Senate Bill 505 was passed last year. It was an initiative between the Recorder's Association and several other agencies, the title associations, we brought the lawyers in, we brought banking institutions and everything else. Part of that statute, or part of that state bill was recodifying the bulk user statute, the bulk user sale statute. And so to do this, to sell bulk copies now, you must have an ordinance in place. If you wish to watermark these bulk copies, you must have an ordinance in place for that, and that's step two.
Step one, yeah, okay.
That's the step one. And also, if, there's two, there's a price, the price of buying, purchasing bulk copies is 10 cents per image. That can be raised up to a top ceiling price of 20 cents per image if you do your diligence and perform a cost analysis. We have done so. I have a copy of that, and I included a copy of that in the packet that I submitted to Attorney McClure, for your records. If we were to charge the bulk rate based on our cost analysis study, we'd be able to charge in excess of 50 cents an image. But by statute, we're limited to 20 cents, and we are seeking that ordinance to be set at, the fee of being set at 20 cents per image.
And John, what would you be using these funds for then?
These funds would then go back into, they would go into the general fund per ordinance, but then they'd be extrapolated, or they'd be allocated to the Recorder's Perpetuation Fund. And that money would then be used for items such as listed on our cost analysis study for things like purchasing hard, computer hardware, which our office pays for our own computers technology. That's probably the biggest expenditure. But other things that include like office supplies and such as that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board? So what we're going to do here again is the public hearing thing. We're going to pause the commissioners' meeting and open a public meeting. We're going to give three people the opportunity, three chances for someone to come forward to speak for and three against. So with that, we're going to call, first person to come forward, anybody wishing to come forward speaking against this ordinance? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward and speaking against this ordinance? Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward and speak against this ordinance? With that, we will now move, first call for anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? With that, the public hearing is now closed. We now open the floor to the board. Any comments, suggestions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion of second on first reading to establish for the recorder an ordinance establishing the manner and form in which the recorder may provide bulk copy, form copies to a bulk user. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposing sign, motion carries. That sneeze, I'll take as an aye. So the first reading's passed. Thank you, John. Now we're going to go into an ordinance requiring the recorder of Porter County to watermark the bulk form copies. This again is another public hearing, so we'll pause the commissioners' meeting, open up a public hearing. We'll give anybody same deal, same format, anybody wishing to come, first call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this ordinance? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this ordinance? Third and final call, anybody wishing to come and speak against this ordinance? Anybody wishing to come forward and speak in favor of this ordinance? Anybody wishing to come, second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak for this ordinance? Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? With that, the public hearing is now closed. Open up the floor to the board. Any comments, questions, suggestions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in second to create an ordinance on first reading requiring the recorder of Porter County to watermark bulk form copies. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post saying sign, motion carries. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
We'll see you back here on the 30th.
All right. Sounds good.
Yep. Oh, and John, thanks for all your getting everything to us. It was right on.
Oh, thank you. We're not. Well, thanks Scott for reviewing all my credentials and everything.
I wish they all came in that way, let's put it that way.
Yeah, and I understand this is, this is your last year in the Recorder's office.
Yes.
You're going to be missed.
Well, thank you.
All right. Next on the list, we're going to move over to Development Stormwater Management. We, before we do that though, we have someone here we'd like to introduce. We introduced her this morning at the Stormwater Board Meeting, but we thought we'd introduce her to a group of people that, there are a lot more people in the room this time, so Bob, go ahead, introduce. Introduce away.
Starting today, for the Development and Stormwater Management Department is our Engineer One position for the Stormwater Section. It's Chelsea Bradford.
You get to do it all over again, Chelsea.
Yeah, right.
And welcome, by the way.
Thank you and good morning, everyone. As Bob said, my name is Chelsea Bradford. I'm the new Engineer One with the Stormwater Department. I grew up in Warsaw, Indiana. I graduated from Valparaiso University. There I focused my research and some of my classes on stormwater management and water quality. After graduation, I worked for Weaver Consultants Group in Chicago focusing also on stormwater management projects and transportation projects. And I'm super excited to be here to work for all you in the community, helping the county with their stormwater program.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
And again, good luck.
Thank you.
You'll want to talk to Heather, new people buy lunch for the commissioners when they first.
She got some dough together.
She's already been told, I'm sure, she forgot the donuts this morning too.
Yeah.
And Jim, you said that right in front of the auditor too, and I know I'm going to get an email later that we can't buy anything for anybody.
Vicky over there taking notes.
Mm-hmm. Oh, that's funny, Vicky.
So back to you, we got a rezone R1. This is low density, single family residential district to MP Manufactured Home Park District. This is petitioner Gary and Lori Nelson, Laura Nelson. This is the second reading, we heard this at our last meeting. Open up the floor, any comments, questions, suggestions from the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in second for a rezone on an R1 low density, single family residential district to MP Manufactured Home Park District and this is the second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post saying sign, most.
Just so everyone knows too, that was a correction.
Yes.
Yes, that was a map correction.
That was a map correction.
Right.
This is.
Plank, commission put this forward.
So this is housekeeping for us to, to correct it. Thank you, Bob. Next on the list is Highway Engineering and this is what we're going to move into now is the award of bids for Bridge 1008. This is bridge reconstruction for Clem Road over Willow Creek.
Correct. At the last meeting, we announced to the actual bidders where the companies were and I'm going to announce the companies along with the bid that they gave.
Okay.
On this for the record, Ellis Construction Company of Gary, Indiana, had a bid of $251,453.81. Report Construction Company had $277,662.81. Reath Riley Construction came in at $263,956.12. Ellis Construction Company of Munster, Indiana, came in at $249,640.18. JCI Bridge Group came in at $253,674.26. And Gary Construction Company came in at $347,500. We received, I thought was a good grouping of bids on this. We reviewed Ellis Construction Company of Munster, Indiana, their bid of $249,640.18 and felt their documents were all in order. We submitted those down to Attorney McClure to review. Our consultant and staff did review them before sending them down and we felt everything was in order and so we sent it down to Attorney McClure for his review also. We are recommending that we go forward with Ellis Construction Company of Munster, Indiana.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion in second for Ellis Construction Company of Munster, Indiana, in the amount And this is for the bridge reconstruction of Clem Road over Willow Creek. One question of clarification for me, what's the difference between Ellis Company out of Munster and Ellis Company out of Gary?
Hi. Can I speak?
Sure, please come forward.
Hi. I'm Todd Lineball. I'm at Ellis Construction Company, LLC.
Oh.
The companies are completely separate. They were all together at one point in time, seven, eight, nine years ago.
And then they split.
And they split.
Okay.
They're totally, two total separate companies.
Okay.
That's separate as an LLC and a corporate.
Okay. Thank you. When they came in, that was my first question, I liked it. Yeah, and they were so close in their bids too.
I met Todd as well, so.
Okay, thank you. So we, we have a recommendation from Highway Engineering to, to approve the low bid of $249,600, $249,640.18 to Ellis Construction Company of Munster, Indiana. Right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post saying sign, motion carries.
Got it. Bob, is this, this bridge part of those, those bridges that are part of the capital improvement program?
No, this is one that has been, um.
Okay.
They've been working on prior to the capital improvement plan.
And this one also goes over Willow, this is, uh, don't this go over tributary to, um?
Yeah, it's just south of US 12, US 20, excuse me, in city of Portage, almost to the county line.
Yeah.
Over Willow Creek.
Yep. But this, this bridge needs.
Yes, it's.
It needs help now.
Yeah, familiar with it.
Like now, now. So, good.
They can go on.
You get them going. Thanks, Bob. Uh, next we have a letter of credit for Tower Meadows Subdivision. They're back, they're back. Attorney McClure lets.
So we've been dealing with Tower Meadows subdivision that's unfortunately gone through a lot of issues since the downturn we had. It's getting itself pulled out of that. Its letter of credit for the infrastructure is due at the end of this month. Actually, I think the 22nd of this month, if memory serves. I have in my possession a, and I believe it's on your guys' record.
Is this thing here?
Yes. And this is just to, um, this is on the letter of credit that does two things. It keeps the same underlying terms of our original letter of credit, however, it does increase the letter of credit to a total of $200,000 as opposed to the roughly $173,000 it originally was.
Correct.
That was based upon some estimates that Highway Engineering did as to what the true cost today would be as this letter of credit's been around for a while on the subdivision. So I have the draft form, it's in your guys' packet, it's from BMO, it's from BMO Harris Bank. My understanding is the final signatures were occurring literally as we are sitting here. So at this point, what I would, what I would request is that if in fact we receive a letter of credit by the close of business today, that that be accepted, the signed version from BMO Harris Bank. If we do not accept it by the end of the day, that myself and the Planning Department and the Planning Department, Highway Planning, Highway Department of Planning has the go ahead to go ahead and call the original letter of credit as we will not have a meeting before the 22nd. I don't expect that to be the case. I do believe this is going to be done and done here probably any minute, but nevertheless, I think to move on, that's, that would be the motion I would request at this time.
So moved.
Second.